This conference will now be recorded.
Our first item tonight is a proclamation celebrating 54 years of fair housing. Whereas the Congress of the United States passed the Civil Rights Act of 1968, which Idol 8 declared the law of the land would now guarantee the rights of equal housing opportunity. And whereas the city of DeSoto is committed to the mission and intent of Congress to provide fair and equal housing opportunities for all. And whereas the fair housing groups and the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development have over the years received thousands of complaints of alleged illegal housing discrimination and found too many of which have proved to be, upon investigation, to be violations of the fair housing laws. And whereas equal housing opportunity is a condition of life in DeSoto, Kansas, which can and should be achieved, now therefore I, Rick Walker, Mayor of the City of DeSoto, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2022 as Fair Housing Month and express the hope this year's observance will promote fair housing practices throughout the city of DeSoto. Our next item is continuation of our public hearing regarding issuance of Flint Commerce LLC of a taxable industrial revenue bonds in the principal amount not to exceed $100 million.
Mayor, I've got a conflict on the Flint project. Do I need to jump off of the public hearing as well?
Yeah, yes, please.
All right, Brandon, if you could text me?
Yes.
All right, so clerk would please note that Councilman Hannah Michael has left the meeting.
So noted.
All right. Before I open the hearing, did you want to make a presentation or?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Kevin.
All right, good evening, Mayor, council members, Kevin Wimpy with Gilmore and Bell, the city's bond council. I think before going to the public hearing, I'll do a quick rundown of the usual procedure. And then Jeff White from Columbia Capital is here to discuss the cost benefit analysis prepared in conjunction with the industrial revenue bonds. So later on your agenda, you'll see you have two resolutions for the issuance of industrial revenue bonds. One is a master resolution for the broader park and multiple facilities. And the other is a resolution for up to $100 million for what we're calling Building 1, or the first projected facility at the site. And this public hearing pertains only to that Building 1 and the $100 million. So recall, the state law process for issuance of industrial revenue bonds is a two-step process. And the city's typical procedure there is on step one to do all the public notice required under the statute, which involves notifying other taxing jurisdictions, preparation of a cost benefit analysis, publication of the notice in the paper, and then considering resolution of intent for the project. And then step two, after at or near completion of the project, is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of IRBs, which affects the tax abatement the following calendar year. So that public notice process in relation to step one was all accomplished for a previous meeting. So tonight's action will be continuing that public hearing and taking public comment. And then later, considering adoption of the resolutions. Yet the effect of adopting those resolutions would allow the company to access the sales tax exemption certificate to go construct its facilities without paying sales tax on materials and equipment. And it's also an indication to the company that the city will later issue the revenue bonds and, you know, turn on the abatement the following calendar year. And the abatement percentage here is 85%, which is in line with the city's policy. These bonds are expected and will be what we call buy your own bonds, where the company purchases its own industrial revenue bond. And it's really just a vehicle for granting the incentives of the sales tax exemption, property tax payment. And the city has no liability for repayment of the bonds, and they don't affect the city's credit. Instead, the company is responsible for the debt service payment via lease payments made under the bond structure. So unless you have questions, I'll step aside and let Jeff address the cost benefit.
Okay, any questions for Kevin Wimpy?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jeff White with Columbia Capital, good evening. I'd like to take just a couple of minutes to talk you through the approach that we take for cost benefit analysis. I do this about once a year, just as a quick reminder. And it seems particularly relevant when we're talking about $100 million IRB tax abatement transaction. So Kevin just talked through the statutory process that we've got to go through with respect to these IRB property tax abatements. One of the steps along the way, statute requires the completion of a cost benefit analysis that looks at the costs and benefits to the affected city, any affected county, any affected school district. So the city, 232 Johnson County here. It also requires a look at the impact on state revenues. The statute says the cost benefit analysis has to be done. It doesn't prescribe the form or the fashion. It also doesn't prescribe an outcome. So it doesn't say that the CBA result has to be positive. It doesn't say that if it's negative, you can't take an action on those types of things. So we've used the same cost benefit analysis approach with property tax abatements in DeSoto for the last decade or so probably, without significant change, maybe even a little bit longer than that. We start by sending out a data request form to the applicant. They provide information about the size of the building, the timing, expected purchases of goods and materials within the community, expected creation of any retail sales taxes, expected employment, features like if folks move here, how big will their families be? How many kids do you think they'll have, all those types of things? Levels of expected average salary for employment, all those types of things. So when we look at cost benefit analysis, we're looking at direct impacts, costs and benefits only. We don't calculate computed costs, spin-off benefits, those kinds of things. So in effect, we're looking at company comes, create a job, somebody moves to DeSoto. What is the impact the company has directly on the costs and benefits to city, county, school district, and the employee that moves into the city, county, or school district directly? We don't look at the fact that if enough new employees move here, a whole bunch of new people are buying Big Macs from McDonald's, and eventually McDonald's is going to have to add more employees. And that generates impacts on the economy as well. We don't go to that level of impact. One of the challenges that we have in putting these analyses together is that the right way to look at it would be what is the marginal cost or marginal benefit of adding a new company and that company adding a new employee? So as an example, if one person moved to DeSoto as the result of a company located associated with the property tax payment, city probably would not have to buy a new snowplow. One employee moves in, one new resident probably don't have to buy a new snowplow. In fact, maybe 100 or a couple hundred people could move to the city, and you wouldn't have to buy a new snowplow. At some point, however, enough new people move in where one more comes, and Mike's public works crew is going to come and say, we got to have another crew. We got to have another truck. That would be the point at which, in a perfect world, we would be assessing a cost to the city of buying a new snowplow, whatever those costs and stays a lot, and assessing that to that particular project. The problem is, for any particular project, we don't know whether we've reached that tipping point for a snowplow or additional police services under your contract with the county, or so on and so on and so forth. So we use the next best thing available to us, which is average cost and average benefit. And what we think that does is probably over time, and over a lot of these abatements, if you grant them, probably works out in the wash. But on any given abatement, it probably understates the benefits and overstates the costs. So we think that's, of all the outcomes that you could have in this sort of a calculation, that's probably the way we'd like to have error, is by overstating costs and understating benefits. But I did want to make that clear, that that is a clear weakness of the way that we approach the work. Is it possible to do marginal cost and benefit calculations? Theoretically, yes. Practically, no. Very, very challenging. Particularly in a case like this, where the applicant is building a spec building, and we don't know what's going to, what kind of company is going to move in there, what kind of employment that they have. So we've made quite a few assumptions. So with that basic background, you'll see the information that Patrick routed earlier, and that was from a packet a couple of meetings ago, from the originally scheduled timing of the consideration of this item. Our cost benefit analysis does show positive net present value benefit over 10 years for the city, county, and the school district in this particular case, largely driven by the fact, as Kevin mentioned, that this is not a full 100% property tax abatement. And the city would expect to benefit from things like additional franchise fees from utility use, some new employees moving to the community, generating property taxes, spending money in the community, those kinds of things. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I will stop and hopefully be able to answer any questions that folks might have.
Does anyone have a question for Mr. White before we move on? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, I will now officially open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to make comment regarding the IRB? Please step forward to the microphone, state your name and address, and share your comments. Are you, do you have anybody online?
Yeah, Mayor, we do have a few visitors on the go-to meeting right now. So I think maybe it might be appropriate to just pause for a moment and allow anybody who might be online wishing to give input on the public hearing on the IRBs just a few minutes to unmute or raise your hand, or otherwise let us know that you want to comment. Okay, I don't see anybody.
No hands have gone up?
Nope.
Okay, seeing no one in the audience and no one online, I'm going to close the public hearing. And we will take this up as part of our regular agenda a little bit later in the meeting. Kevin, are you back in the meeting?
Look, I'm back.
Okay. Our next item is our consent agenda. Tonight on the consent agenda, we have approval of the minutes from the council meeting of March 17, approval of pay ordinance number 923, approval of donation request from the Cal Valley Sportsman's Association, approval of ordinance 2532, correcting legal description for Morgan 530, annexing approximately 10 acres of land, and consideration of a temporary use permit for downtown spring event. Anyone have any item on the consent agenda they would wish to pull and discuss? Or can we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion when we approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion? Roll call, please.
Murdock.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Ritter.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
Hannah Michael.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mayor. Okay, our next item, please note that Councilman Ritter has leaving the meeting. Item 1.5 is consider pay ordinance 923A.
I'll make a motion when we approve ordinance, pay ordinance 923A.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Murdock.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Hannah Michael.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
Motion.
Thank you. Item two, call the public, members of the public are welcome to use this time to comment about any matter relating to city business not listed on tonight's agenda. The comments that are discussed under call to public may or may not be acted on by the council during this meeting. There is a four-minute time limit. Does anyone wish to address the council tonight under call to public? I don't see anybody online raising their hands either, so we will move on. Item three, I'm sorry, before we move on, I do want to ask for one agenda adjustment. I would like to move item 4B ahead of item 4A. Item 4B is mowing contract.
I'll make a motion. We move 4B in front of 4A.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 opposed? Okay. Item three. Consider resolution 1068 authorizing benefit district and improvement district development agreement with Merck for improvements to 87th Street.
Yes, council, this is on old business item. We tabled this item last week because there were some details still yet to work out with the applicant. I did provide some background information in the previous staff report that I gave in the previous packet. Happy to go over that now, but I think we did discuss it briefly at the last meeting. Just an introduction of Merck is asking for a benefit district to do essentially two improvements along the 87th Street corridor. The first would be to repave the street largely in its existing geometry, just resurface the street. They're also doing some concrete additions to the entrance locations there. The second component is the construction of an eight-foot wide concrete rec path along the entire length. This, the section goes from Sunflower Road in the east to almost to Timber Trails Drive, but essentially the entire frontage of Merck's property along 87th Street. They have agreed to pay 100% of the cost of the paving, and the cost of the path would be paid by the city at large. So the mechanism here is if the benefit district is formed, Merck would go and implement all the improvements. So they would get the bids, and they would do the work for the repaving and the trail construction. Then after the construction is done, we would issue bonds that would be paid off over a 10-year period. Merck would be responsible by an annual tax assessment on the property for their portion of the work. And then the city at large, we would budget, in our budget, just the debt service that would be attributable to our portion. Another reason that we tabled it from last meeting was because we wanted the cost estimates, the total maximum authorization, expenditure authorizations. We were still working with some estimates and, you know, changing conditions in the bidding atmosphere that caused us to reduce the maximum authorization for the city portion from $600,000 down to $500,000, and actually increase the maximum authorization for Merck's portion for the pavement from $900,000 up to $100, up to $1 million. So the overall amount stayed the same, it's just proportions changed a little bit there. This does necessitate the approval of a development agreement that just articulates the terms that I just explained. And that is attached to the staff report. Also attached is the updated cost summary showing those differences between the last time you saw it and now. And the development agreement is also attached as exhibit C. So there is a required resolution of advisability to form the district. There will be other steps to take after the project costs are known and the bonds need to be issued, and the actual assessments need to be levied. There's steps to take after the fact. But that's the mechanism, I think, is, well, it is recommended that council pass the resolution of advisability, which is exhibit D, and that also approves the development agreement. So really, it's only one action, I believe, unless I'm mistaken, one action that needs to be taken tonight. Be happy to stand for any questions. I'll stop there. We do have Kevin Wimpy, is the author, largely the author of the development agreement and the resolutions. And Merck representation is here in the audience as well. Do want to express appreciation to Merck. As we talked last time, their obligation is really to fix the damage that was caused last summer and fall from a hauling operation. This goes far above, you know, their agreement to repave the entire stretch goes far above what they're really obligated to do. And they've also agreed to cover any costs that would exceed our maximum expenditure authorization of $500,000 for the rec path. So both of those actions are above and beyond really what their obligation is. And so, so that's very much appreciated. So we recommend proceeding with the benefit district tonight.
Okay. Mike, just a quick, can you, I got a text that our live stream on the Google is not working.
Okay, yeah, I see that.
If you could do that in two seconds, we'll go ahead and take care of that. If not, we'll...
Yeah, let me, let me give it one more shot.
All right.
I'm going to have to go.
All right.
We got our microphone fixed, so something else.
Technology is a beautiful thing.
Yeah, Mayor, if this doesn't work, I don't think.
Okay, yeah, I don't want to spend much time, if we can do it quickly.
I am recording the go-to meeting, and we'll definitely get that. If someone's wanting to view now, you might tell them they'll have to join the go-to. Sorry about that. Looks like we're out of luck.
All right. So on the benefit district, the question, the one question I had, and I think you covered it last meeting when you presented it, the anticipated annual debt service that we would have to appropriate was...
Yeah, let me pull that. I didn't, I didn't put that in the new staff report, did I?
I didn't see it easily, but that mean it wasn't there.
So... In the last staff, I'm just looking at it now. Based on $400,000, which was kind of what we initially estimated the path construction to be, our annual commitment is going to be about $50,000 over the 10-year period. $50,000 per year.
That's good. All right, thank you. Any questions from council?
Mike, I had asked you this earlier, and I don't totally remember. What's the impact to, I believe there's three residences along that road?
Yeah.
What's the impact of the benefit district on those residents?
Yeah, you did ask because, well, because of the, because of the Flint deal we're talking about, who has to be included, who doesn't. So there will be no obligation. Those residents that live along that road are not required to be included in the benefit district because Merck has agreed that they are going to be responsible for all the costs. They've signed, it's a release or a waiver, is it a waiver? Yeah, that says, we know others might benefit, and that's okay with us, we're still going to pay for it. That's essentially what it says. So yeah, there is, I'll pull up, pull up the map. But there's, there's resident, there's two, two or three, maybe.
I think there's three. There's two on that south side of A7, near Timber Trails, and one over on the corner as you turn.
Right. So there's that one, two, and then a third one down here. Yeah. Yeah, again, not included, so no impact.
Any question, other questions?
No, but I would also kind of just chime what Mike said on the appreciative to the company for Merck for doing this. Because now that takes a big project off of our shoulder by having them do that trail for us on a project that we would probably want to get done some, with all the projects we have going on that they're... I'd say thank you again.
Anything else? So the action we would take is to approve...
Resolution.
Resolution in exhibit D, correct?
That's our... 1016?
1068.
1068. I'll make a motion, then we approve resolution number 1068, setting forth findings and determination out of the city of the set of advisability of the authority pursuant to KSA 126801.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion? Roll call, please.
Ritter.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
Murdock.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. I would also echo Mike's, our city administrator and councilman. Thank you both very much for your support of the city in our efforts to improve our walkability. All right, item 4D. Now, consider 2022 mowing and weed contract with Supreme Green Land Works.
All right, good evening. Back in 2016 was the last time we came to you with the, with the contract acceptance. After that, we were just kind of rolling over within a 5% increase. We were told last fall, or a previous contractor, that the increase was going to be at least 20, if not 30%. So that was in October, so I brought that up to Mike, and it was pretty obvious that we're going to need to bid. So put this out, beginning of March, we only received two bids, unfortunately. One from Supreme Green Land Works LLC out of Bonner, and one from DLLC out of Gardner. Supreme Green Land Works is the low, the low bid of 121, 140. As you see in the memo, quite a bit of time was taken this year by Ron and Mike to go through our maps with the, knowing we needed to make additions to all the annexed properties. And then there were some other areas that the contractors were not able to do, and Ron was having to do with his sidearm mower. So took quite a bit of time to clean that up and get things to where we can go out for bid. Because over the last five years, we had added this or added that as things were going on, and just getting it all cleaned up and straightforward. So don't really have anything else that I can add. If you have any other, any other questions, basically what we're asking for is approval to enter an agreement with Supreme Green Land Works LLC for the 2022 mowing contract.
I noticed that Kansas Land Management didn't...
Correct.
...bid this year.
Correct. In talks with them, they are short-staffed at this point, which I heard quite a bit. And they also did pick up in January some other jobs, not knowing if they would be getting ours. So I don't know if he has more staff now, but talked to him in October, and that's when he brought up the possible increase, and then talked to him again in January. And he stated at that time, he didn't know based on having, I can't remember what percentage he said, but quite a few less staff numbers, unfortunately.
And then the follow-up, and we probably really don't know because we can't make an apples to apple. This isn't really, we can't do an apples to apples to our last year's mowing expense.
No.
The contract has changed so much.
Yes, yes. Added a lot along, obviously 103rd Edgerton Road. Mike, you can chime in anytime. I'm more on the park side, but I kind of try to keep track of that to a certain extent. But I think maybe some of the stuff changed from unimproved to improved, but like it needed to be more mowed more frequently. But yeah, you're right, it's not an apples to apples from, from what was out.
Questions from councils?
So you mentioned Ron and the sidearm mower. So will this new contract encompass stuff taking some of the burden off of them to deal with some of that? Or will they still be dealing with?
They still will, and through talks, I don't want to speak for Ron, but from what I, what I've gathered from Ron, and Mike, like I said, chime in if you need to. But there were some areas that ended up being that Ron and his guys had to take care of, that slopes, did some ditches, some areas that weren't really safe for the equipment that Kansas Land Management had, or most typical mowing contractors have. So they'd have to get in, the street department would have to do with the sidearms. So their load has not lessened. I think it may have actually, it may have increased a little bit, just little pieces here and there.
Yeah, it really was a matter of just truing up the maps, because we hadn't touched them since 2016. And since that time, we've taken a little piece here, a little piece there, really just for safety reasons. Because, you know, contractors don't have the... Because, you know, contractors don't have the boom mower that we have, so.
And I'm familiar with the boom mower, because it's used over in our neighborhood. Modern mount, so I didn't know if this helped alleviate some of him, or if it just keeps about the same.
You know, I think part of the, part of the reasoning that we took on that was that the boom mower stuff is the type of stuff we kind of want to have better control over, because we're trimming trees and stuff, you know, people can get sensitive about that, so our guys, I think, know a lot better, sort of, you know, wants, you know. We just, we just want to, we like to do that rather than having that put on a contractor. It's learning curve, mostly.
Some of that sideline stuff, the intersections, I think, and heard you guys talk about before, and making sure that's safety too.
Yeah, Mike, where did we publish it since we got to?
We published it with Drexel and with Public Purchase, were the two sites. In 16, I only used Public Purchase, and we received at least a half dozen bids in 16, and I was gonna do that only, and then I got to talking to Brad and some of the contractors, and then they said that people that put mowing contracts on, on Drexel's site as well, which I'm not really familiar with, but, so Brad went ahead and put it on Drexel as well.
And this, I mean, these bids are kind of way, way apart.
They're, they are definitely a spread. The company that was, was higher is, had, had less personnel, I don't know, I didn't really dig too far into it. But the Supreme Green Land Works, we did check references on them, and they're a 25 to 30 roughly employer.
Thank you, that answered my question.
Anything else? Or a motion to approve the, accept the bid?
I did prepare a contract with the mayor's signature that's attached.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we authorized the mayor to sign the 2022 mowing lease contract between the city of DeSoto and Supreme Green Land Works LLC.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hunter Michael.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Murdock.
Yes.
Ritter.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
All right. So Councilman Hunter Michael, the next three items, I think we're gonna be talking about Flint and.
Flint, the Taco Bell site, and the Lochner contract. Yes, so I will be recusing myself from all three of those items.
Okay.
Okay, so Brandon, if you could text me, I will join back in.
Okay.
Okay.
I have noted he has left the meeting.
All right, thank you. Item four A, consider items related to Flint Development Center. Number one, consider resolution 1069, approving development agreement with Flint Commerce. Item two, consider resolution 1070, master resolution of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds for Flint Commerce Center. And item, or item three, consider resolution 1071, resolution of intent to issue industrial revenue bond Commerce Center in the amount not to exceed 100 million. And item four, consider road improvement benefit district result. Mike, were you gonna do an introduction?
Yeah, just by way of brief introduction, I think everybody's familiar with this, the, the site, the general scope, the scale of the, the development. The intent of the developer, he's been here, there, there's been some presentations to this board in the past. We spent the, the past few months negotiating, largely negotiating the terms of the development agreement, which will be the first item for your consideration. That essentially lays out the, the obligations of the developer to, to come in, to approve the pad site, make, make the property ready for redevelopment. Also obligates the developer to construct a spec building within a certain timeframe if, if he can't land a, an outside project. Obligates him to reconstruct Edgerton Road with the, with the use of a benefit district. And that benefit district is set up such that any future development in the area that also wants to take access to that will have to pay in as the beginning, so it's not to put the, the Flint development at a competitive economic disadvantage with another similar development across the road. The development agreement also has provisions for extension of sewer and water improvements to the site. And to be funded, or to be undertaken by the city, but to be funded by agreements, take-or-pay agreements that the developer will either purchase a set amount of water or sewer service such that we can retire the bonds necessary to perform those improvements. Or he will make payments to cover the difference if we don't have enough water or sewer use out there. Small wrinkle in the, in the water discussion is that it is in the service territory of Water District Seven. So the development agreement articulates that and makes provisions for the city to extend service only in the event that the rural district cannot. The other items, as the mayor mentioned, relate to the industrial revenue bonds, one of which we held a public hearing for the first project. There's another resolution of intent to, to issue future industrial revenue bonds totaling 500 million. Those revenue bonds come with a payment in lieu of taxes. And the schedule that you've seen, it's a dollar per square foot, equates roughly to around 85% tax statement consistent with our economic incentive policy. So what I'd like to do, we have representatives from Flint Development here, Hunter Harris and Court Maxwell. Like to invite them to give just a brief overview presentation of their intent, and, you know, maybe some of the opportunities that lie in, in front of us. And then I'd like to turn it over to, who was gonna, oh, Patrick was going to outline the specifics of the, of the development agreement. So with that, Mayor, with your permission.
Sure.
Hunter to the podium.
Please.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Hunter Harris, one of the two founding partners with Flint Development, again, before you. More than anything, I wanted to keep our presentation pretty brief this evening, as there's obviously been a lot of debate and dialogue around this project. I wanted to thank Mike, the staff, and their consultants on a, a very thorough job in preparing this development agreement. I think it's mutually beneficial to both parties. I can tell you that the state of the industrial and manufacturing industry remains incredibly strong. At present time, I actually just back from Boston, unfortunately couldn't go to New Orleans. Meeting with a representative from a user on Monday evening before the national championship game that has fairly sincere interest in up to a 1.2 million square foot project that we are, we are bullish on. Certainly, it's very early, but obviously, you can see our commitment here as it relates to going out and attracting best-in-class users for this park. From our perspective, we have closed on all of the real estate. We closed on the Heitzen parcel today. So we are out now fully in control of the property. With a favorable action from this body this evening, we would look forward to convincing our site work construction next month. So that would be out on site. We are working with the city with this favorable action to have their design and construction, the utilities necessary to meet the site. We're gonna get it out ahead of it. That type of activity is what it's necessary to take and win users these days. They don't want to hear a bunch of talk about what could be, they need to see, they need to see results. So as such, we'd be started on our mass grading and site work of the overall project here next month. We are, we are in it to create a fantastic mix of manufacturers and warehousing users with this project. As such, we're committed, if we're unsuccessful in landing what I described as build-to-suit user, or, you know, a manufacturer wants to come in and build their own facility in which we could transfer them land to do that, then we will be building, building speculatively here, so. We are 110% in on this project. We look forward to a long and healthy relationship with the city of DeSoto, and we'll work to make you very proud as part of our improvements. I'd stand for any questions.
Questions for Mr. Harris before we move on?
I, I forgot one thing. I was having a conversation with Councilman Daniels right before the meeting. I developed a nice relationship with particularly one of the neighbors during this process. I've been out to meet at their home, which was under construction, probably now wrapped up. I haven't been back by several months ago to discuss some of their concerns, and we, we very much do want to be good neighbors as part of this project. I believe there's perhaps some wordsmithing in the development agreement that I take a recommendation from this council this evening. It's certainly not our intent to force anybody into this benefit district, so. You know, they said, hey, if we pay our driveway, it's our understanding, you know, we're gonna be subject to all these expenses, and that's not the intent of the benefit district. The intent of the benefit district is, obviously, we're incurring, you know, probably 10, not including the site work, you know, six to eight million dollars worth of expense to construct these roads and our take-or-pay. And if somebody were to transfer their property into a commercial use, if it were annexed into the city rezoned, and let's say there were apartments or, you know, greater development there, then we're just hoping to recapture a small pro-rata share as part of that. So I just wanted to communicate to you directly about that issue. If there's any. If there's any confusion about that in the development agreement, I'd love to have that cleared up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question to them? If I had a driveway into my property?
Well, I mean, he mentioned my concern, that let me go and address that in the development agreement, page 10, or not 16, is where it talks about adding, I believe, a street or a drive is the terminology there. In the actual development agreement, the language is a little bit different. And this is where in talking with Hunter, it was maybe changing that term "drive" to something that would be more commercial backing, eyes like a parking lot or commercial entrance or something to state that intent that it's not meant for the residents that are there, because one of the concerns I've had is creating a barrier to where any of the residents out there want to be able to come annex into the city so they can have a say, have a vote, and have something, I don't want to see a barrier that, to do that, and if they don't have the money to do a driveway now, but they want to add it later, all of a sudden they're looking at basically a, a fee or a surcharge to be able to join the city. And that's where it seems like Hunter is very clear that that's not the intent, so. Having some clarity on what that drive, quote, a drive would be is kind of the wordsmithing that we were talking about.
Got somewhat of a law driveway onto, but a, a entrance onto it.
Yeah, because.
Sure. Sorry, I, I just wanted to address this briefly, and I'll, I'll ask Kevin, but we at the staff level, we're fully aware of this sort of problem or issue. And we worked the language to the best that we could, keeping within the confines of the legal requirements. And the whole sort of what's being talked about is, gosh, if someone's not developing the property commercially, then they shouldn't be pulled into the benefit district. The problem is with the benefit district statutes legally, we can't we can't have the trigger based on how the property is used. It, it has to be with regard to connecting to the improved street, so.
First of all, it's with regard to annexation, right? You can't, we.
Right.
No one is gonna be pulled into the benefit district unless they are part of the city of DeSoto, so as long as the residents stay within the county, they will never be part of the benefit district.
Good point. That is true, exactly.
But it would seem, I guess, to this point, couldn't it just simply add public street or commercial drive to this little paragraph? It would seem to address the, the questions and, and meet the intent of the.
Kevin Wimpy with Gilmore and Bellion. Yet. This statement's made, I, I think we've worked the language to, the intent here is to capture the future development where someone, first of all, annexes and then improves their access to the improved road of Edgerton Road. The types of what-if questions about repaving a driveway or something that's already taking access, that's not the intent of the benefit district to capture that type of maintenance or, or work on existing access roads.
So would that, a number of the drives out there are still gravel, so if they improved them to the point of concrete and paving them, that would still be excluded?
If they're, I mean, first of all, annexed and.
If they were annexed.
Yeah, that, you know, that, that type of, it would be factually based, I think, if, if they would maintain their existing connection. Yeah, that is not the intent of the development agreement to capture that type of, of connection.
The decision and, and action to initiate assessments against a property that were to even become part, say, it annexes and is now part of the city. This body is the one that would then take the action to initiate the assessments for the benefit district assess, is that correct?
Yeah, correct. So procedurally, again, with the, the benefit fee areas, the technical term for the east side property that's outlined as potentially future assessed, but the process is they would have to annex, first of all, and, and second, take connection and improve, make a curb cut or access that improved street of Edgerton Road. And they would have to submit, in conjunction with the planning process through the city, a petition to take that access and accept the assessments levy.
I think it's important to add, too, that the city isn't benefiting by pulling additional people into the benefit district. Obviously, the, you know, that may help the developer, but as you've heard from Mr. Harris, that's not, not their intent, so. We feel comfortable you know, with, with the language that we have, that that's not gonna happen.
Okay. For the answer is, if they're putting an X in, in the concrete, they're making curbs up.
Yes, and again, I would just say that we're sort of trying to do a dance here, just to make sure we're staying within the confines of the benefit district statutes. Again, we don't want to, you know, tinker with the language such that it's, it could be challenged on the basis that we are making decisions based on the use of the property. That's the problem, is the benefit district statutes do not allow you to, to you know, have the trigger be based on how the property is being used, so.
Mike. So question, and it's related, but it's not related per se. Having a second driveway entrance in DeSoto is restricted on what type of roads?
Yeah, we do have.
And my question to that would be, is Edgerton becoming one of those roads that restricts the second drive? Anyway.
Yeah, so there are provisions in the comprehensive plan that on arterial roads, which Edgerton would probably be either a major collector or here. The driveway spacing requirements, you know, you, you should consider, you know, a, access impacts, and there are driveway spacing requirements. There's nothing in the city code that prohibits that. So in the event that a single-family homeowner wanted a, a second drive, we typically don't deny those because it's not in the city code. Now, if someone, if a, if a commercial development wanted to come in and have driveways, then we would apply that, the planning, the, the planning standards. But there's no code restriction against it, per se. So I, I would think as long as the properties remain single-family, large, by and large, we would approve a curb, a second curb cut on a particular lot.
Okay.
Just my memory research, I got like way away. That gentleman cut that good yard with that second curb cut in. And he was denied that, put on that back.
Well, I think there's no code restriction that disallows him from having a second entrance.
Well, I think there's no code restriction that disallows him from having a second entrance. Um.
So let's get back on to this item. So. Patrick, do you want to run through, I, I think we would, are we? And we can get back to the words on this benefit, we're actually going to take up the. Benefit district agreement as item three, I think of this, but Patrick, would you run down? Basically, the obligations of each party under, under the agreements that we're.
Sure.
Working on.
Then Mike covered some of these, but I would just mention that, you know, throughout in this project and others, Mike has been very adamant that development pays for development and. You know, we feel like with this development, we've held to that. The city obviously does have some obligations, but for the most part. Flint is paying, paying their way on this transaction. And also did want to mention that Kevin Wimpy. Took the lead in preparing the development agreement, did a very good job, obviously, there's a lot of, lot of items to cover, but. Just viewing this sort of in. Big picture terms. If we look at it from the standpoint of, you know, what is Flint bringing to the table and then what is the city agreeing to, to, to help this project? Basically, first focusing on Flint, obviously, they, they purchased the ground. That is being developed here, they purchased the ground for over seven million dollars. Flint also will be responsible for all the planning, construction and development to have the pad-ready sites for industrial uses, uses on the property. And those pad-ready sites will need access to city sewer and possibly city water, may, maybe rural. The rural water district, but it also may be city, depending on the rural water district's capacity. As Mike covered there, Flint is on the hook for the road improvements, that's something they're fronting the money for, they are fully paying for that. The, as we've talked, the, the benefit district essentially is a vehicle to. Allow Flint to stay competitive with. Someone that develops commercially across the street and did not have to contribute to the millions of dollars in the road improvement, so. That is really the purpose of the benefit district to make sure that they're not put at a competitive disadvantage. With the, another commitment by Flint is that in return for the city. Constructing the sewer improvements and possibly the water improvements. They are agreeing to minimum charges. That they will pay in usage or if they don't have that usage, so. Essentially, that's security for the city, that the city will be reimbursed for those sewer and water improvements. As was discussed, Flint has also committed to the spec building. And that would occur on this, I think the deadline for that's the second anniversary of having the pad-ready sites. So then moving to the city contributions, as has been discussed, you are being asked to approve a master resolution, that's resolution 1070, and essentially what that is indicating that is that. It is your intent in the future to issue IRBs up to 500 million. Dollars, and again, that's not the city's money, that's the developer's money, but by the city agreeing to that. Essentially, you are indicating that you will consider. Tax abatement and. The sales tax exemption. Now, the resolution for the hundred million dollars in IRBs for the spec building, as Jeff described, he did perform a cost benefit analysis on that and. We had the public hearing as to the 500 million dollar IRBs, those will need to be similar to Merck or Intervet. We will need to take those up, have a public hearing as they come forward and, you know, at present time, the only. Commitment we have is a spec building, so other projects will have to come back before the council. As part of this transaction, the city did agree to cap its city fees at 500,000 dollars for the project. There are many things that does not attach to, for example, building permit fees, utilities or franchise fees are not included in that cap. Essentially, the cap incentivize a project by. Capping excise tax and, but for the cap, the excise taxes would be roughly 2 million dollars. And then we've talked about the, the benefit district, as I mentioned. You know, Mike and I, we, we've worked on Kevin Wimpy, we understood this issue with the, the road connection. I feel like we have, you know, pushed that envelope as far as we can, as far as the language goes, but as everybody discussed, I think. You know, everybody is of the same mind that there is no intent to. You know, force people into this benefit district. Even if they do annex into the city, so. That covers the deal points, I'm happy to answer any other question, I know Mike has specifics on, for example, the sewer and water. The take or pay agreements, that was, those were calculations that Mike did for those, so.
Okay. So. Questions from council, do we want to, I mean. All the, all of our questions so far have been related to the benefit district document. Do, do we have any questions about items one, two, three that are listed on? Page three, the, the resolution approving the development agreement, the approval of the. Resolution of intent for the, the. 500 million and then the approval of the issuance of. 100 million and then IRBs. All right. So then, back to the. Benefit district language, Rob, since you seem to have most of the questions, where, where you stand on that now, what are your?
Um, an actual benefit district document, it's fairly vague. And, I'm, let's see. In the right document.
The, the, if I'm where you're looking for that, Rob, the notes that you had, right, which you just pointed out, that particular document is what says in it. Substantial improvement, for example, gravel is paved, and, and so if that, you know, that would be one area that, to me, that's not, that's, I mean.
That's not substantial.
To me, that's not a substantial greedy improvement, so to me, that shouldn't say that in there with the intent of five years from now, and I'm not here and somebody else is on here, they look at this and they say. Oh, substantial improvement, it said right there, gravel is to pave, so I don't like that because to me, that's not improvement, you know, improvement would be, you know, another one or, you know, making some huge one, so. So I agree that something, it may not say that in the documents, but it does say that in this.
In the memo.
In the memo, and people are going to read the memo just as well as the documents to get a short version. So I don't like it being in that memo. I don't know how you can scratch it out of a memo, we already did, but, you know, if you were just skimming through five years from now and you read the memo and you said, okay, that's what that means. That could cause some issues because to me, that's not the intent, it's not your intent that if somebody wants to pave their driveway. Rather than have a gravel one that all of a sudden they're going to have to do, that, that wouldn't be my intent. So, so if there's a way to make sure that. I don't know that that memo can be changed, but at least that it's pretty clear that, you know. The example is, this would not be an example of it, instead of this is an example.
Well, that's where. Yeah, it's page four of the benefit agreement where it says substantially improve and. The benefit agreement document doesn't really go into a whole lot more, it's more in the. Development agreement that has kind of the terms that, in the memo that have the terms that bring in a lot of the questions.
Yeah.
So if it's a matter of just being able to work with the development agreement, not necessarily the. Benefit, benefit district document, because it's vague enough. Because kind of what Lori said, it's been back in my mind of, okay, if 10 years from now, everybody that's sitting here has moved on.
What's going to happen when someone wants.
When somebody just looks at reading the document only.
Yeah, and I guess at the time, we discussed this and understanding this issue. I mean, technically, I think if, if this were in front of a court. Paving that driveway would technically speaking. Be an improvement, if it's, the, the benefit district statutes are mainly. You know, for connecting to water or sewer, and that's easy because when you connect, it's, you know, you connect, but with roads, it gets really. Tough because obviously, these properties are already connected and. I mean, I'm happy to, you know, go back to the drawing board, but I just wanted you guys to know that we, we've already spent significant time on this and.
I know, yeah, I don't think anybody's seen this to scrap the, the, the benefit district resolution, I think just add a paragraph in the, in the. Development agreement to clarify everyone's intent of what is, you know. Yeah, maybe it has no legs in the legal world 10 years down the road, but I guess for us, it right now does, you know.
The other question or thought I had is. Would it really come down to curb cuts, if they have a. Cut into the street to where if they had the curb cut already existing. And it was gravel from the curb on and they just paved it, does that mean substantial if they don't actually cut into it? If that's the case, then in the development of the road, discussion with the homeowners, could the curb cuts be put in for those that wanted? A second drive to where they negated it, I mean.
Yeah, we addressed. My, you know, trying to do it by curb cut, unfortunately, that's, we can't do it that way legally. Either, so Kevin, I don't know if you want to, I know this is kind of a. Sticky deal here, but do you feel like we can? Modify the language or?
Yeah, Patrick, I'd say the, the language in the benefit district documents, I know everyone's looking at a little bit the development agreement, a little bit at the, the petition that was submitted in the resolution, the. Petition and resolution are largely pulled from the statutory language about benefit fees and so forth, so I would be hesitant to adjust anything on the fly there tonight. You know, the development agreement is approved in substantially final form for execution, should you pass the resolution tonight, and so we could certainly, you know. Sort of have a statement of the current city's intent and memorialize that in the development agreement to a little bit further extent. We've certainly worked with it and put in the substantially improved language and so forth, because I know this has been a big focus. And, and sort of addressing some of these what-if questions, but, you know, I think we could. You know, collaborate a bit more and see what. You know, where we can expound the, the current city council's intent in the development agreement.
Because it was my intent.
Yeah. And, and again, the, the resolution approves in substantially final form, so staff, we can, this is a very minor part, obviously, there's a lot of pages and documents in front of you, that's, that's something I feel confident we could. Work with the language a little bit and, and. Again, sort of expound on what your intent is, okay?
See, I'd be comfortable if, if you wanted to prove subject to us, you know, further. You know, studying and seeing what, what more clarity we can bring to this issue. And that way, we wouldn't have to bring it back, but. I get everybody's concerns and, and we, we definitely want to. You know, try to address those, but it, it does get difficult.
All right, what are folks' thoughts on that, do we have?
Like I said, I, I don't see this project, you know, though, if they're. Moving dirt next. And it seems possible to.
I was going to say, we've moved this to council meetings already. So, I have no problem. Putting forth a motion to pass it and then. Giving Patrick and Kevin and, and the ability to make sure that there's a, some form of statement of intent of. What we've talked about and what Hunter's stated his intent is as well, because it seems like his intent and ours are very similar on that. Because I want to make sure the concern is addressed, but at the same time, not hold back. The development, if we can get clarity on that one point.
Yep. So, so what I heard was a motion, the first motion would be a motion to approve the resolution 1069, proving the development agreement with Flint Commerce Center. With the understanding that the language would be modified to include. The document would be modified to include language that captures the intent expressed by the developer and the city regarding the residences or. Future obligations related to the benefit district. Of the.
And we'll write it back to let you know what we. Come up with, but, yeah, I just kind of view this as we are trying to. Make sure we're staying within the legal requirements, but at the same time, expressing. The city and developers intent, so.
Is that, you want to make that motion then? So, you want to read, did you capture any of that?
I got most of it, I was just about to.
Do you want to read that back to Rob so he could hear, hear and modify that motion?
I might need a little bit more clarification, I have motion to approve resolution 1069 with the understanding. That the document and language will be modified with the intent to, to express. The agreement between the developer and the city regarding future, and that's where I left.
The, the document would be modified to capture the intent of the developer and the city. Related to future obligations of current or adjacent properties to relative to the benefit district.
That works.
I'd second.
So, yes, I make that motion.
Well, when his fingers stop, I can all know that, so, we, motion.
Actually, read it back and then I'll say I make that motion.
Motion by count, motion to approve resolution 1069, understanding with. Understanding language will be modified to express the extent, to the, I'm sorry, to express the intent. By the developer and the city regarding future obligations of adjacent properties.
The only thing I would say add in there is the mutual.
Mutual.
Intent, since. It's, we're on the same page, or seem to be.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second by Councilman Ritter. Any discussion of the motion, we all understand what it is? Okay, roll call please.
Murdock.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Ritter.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Item two is, considers the, our resolution of intent to issue. Bonds for Flint Commerce Center LLC, any amount not to exceed 500 million, so this would be the.
Resolution.
For a resolution, for future projects.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number 1070, determining the intent of the city of DeSoto. And to, to issue its industrial revenue bonds in one or more series in the principal amount of. Not to exceed 500 million to finance the cost of acquiring, constructing and equipping multiple facilities. Commerce Center LLC and successors and assigns.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion of that motion? Brandon, do you have all that down?
Yes, I, I have the motion.
Okay. When you're ready, call the roll.
Okay. Murdock.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Ritter.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item three is motion to approve resolution 1071 for 100 million, I'll read it all, somebody do.
I'll read it for you, I'll make.
I'll make a motion, we approve resolution 1071, determining the intent of the city of DeSoto, Kansas, to issue its industrial revenue bonds and one or more series in the principal amount not to exceed $100 million to finance the cost of acquiring, constructing, and equipping an industrial or manufacturing facility for the benefit of Flint Commerce Center LLC and successors and assigns.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call the roll when you're ready, Brandon.
Lane.
Yes.
Ritter.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Murdock.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item four, benefit district.
Ready for motion?
Ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion, reprove resolution 1072, a resolution determining the viability of the making of certain improvements in the city of DeSoto, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto and authorizing, providing for the making of their improvements with such findings.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Daniels.
Yes.
Murdock.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
Ritter.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you, Hunter. Thank you, Corb.
Thank you all. Appreciate it. See you soon.
Item four C, consider replat at hike 10 Commerce Park.
Yes, council, you've seen this plat before. Commerce Park, final plat came for you several months ago. It was discovered after that that there was an error in in the plat caused by, it was a survey error in locating the existing Jake's Fireworks Building. When they discovered the error, they found that the the location of the northeast corner of the building actually encroached on the platted easement that was on the plat that we we approved. So the new plat essentially just fixes that little sliver of easement and a little sliver of right of way. The fortunate thing in this is that the previous plat that we'd approved had not been filed yet. So there is no right of way or easements to vacate, which would have thrown this into a public hearing sort of a situation. So essentially, this action just corrects the, just slightly modifies the easement and right of way there and corrects the surveying error from the previous plat. Planning Commission, consider this their last meeting. They approved it. It now comes to you for acceptance of easements and rights. So recommend that you.
Okay.
Approve the plat, replat.
Questions or motion to accept and approve?
I'll make a motion, we approve the replat and of the K-10, hike 10 Commerce Park, lot four, block two.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Lane.
Yes.
Ritter.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Murdock.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, item 40, consider engineering services agreement with Lockner Inc. for phase one of the 83rd Street Bridge Replacement Project.
Good evening, council. This is a follow up from the March 3 city council meeting, where the council accepted the recommendation from the review committee and authorized staff to negotiate a fee with Lockner Inc. The, there are several complicating factors in this project that will require the projects we done in phases. They are the width of the bridge, the height, and it's its impact on adjoining roads and properties. As a result, we've decided to implement a free phase approach. The first phase is the preliminary design, which will include coordination with the Sunflower Redevelopment Group, coordination with KDOT and Public Utilities. The total budget in the CIP for this project is 250,000 for the entire design of the project. The the total contracted price for phase one is 100, is 101,802. And with that, I'll stand for any questions and recommend you approve the contract.
Questions for Brandon on the locker contract? Being that phase one's 100,000 of the 250, does it look like we'll, I mean, hard to say, but be on budget with the phase two, phase three aspect?
Yeah, it's hard to say. So phase three is construction phase services. So those would be in the construction budget. So, you know, this preliminary, there's going to do quite a bit of work on the preliminary. So we got to decide what type of bridge we're going to build, how high, maybe the alignment. They're going to be doing the survey. That's a big, big chunk of it. So.
Is this a lot into dealing with the railroad on this phase as well?
A little bit, yeah. It's a little different. The spur isn't owned by BNSF. So it's not like dealing with the railroad, like I say that. But, yeah, there's some of that.
The negotiation as far as what standard they have to meet?
Yeah, yeah. So it's like.
That's in this phase?
Yeah, that's in this phase. How wide, you know, do we want, how much clearance do we want? But but it's the vertical clearance that's really the question. And so we can have that have that discussion among us, with council, with railroad, with Sunflower, you know, lots of, there's differing opinions on it.
Yeah, yeah. So so if if it goes to the maximum, the highest, and and the why, that's going to have a pretty big footprint. And that, I think, potentially causes to exceed the phase two budget. Because it's just going to be a lot more, it's going to be a bigger project than a lot more work. But if it's if it's replacement of the bridge that's of similar height to what's there now, I wouldn't anticipate it would be, I think, we we got a pretty good.
Because in the request for this, they talked about the, whether it was to the current standard or to the current existing and variations in between. So all that, figuring that out's in this phase of it.
Yeah, and that's that's the reason we wanted two phases.
It states in here that they don't have to have flaggers or anything? That's where we didn't.
I'm not sure where.
It's in the.
It's not, it's a, it's a private spur. It's an industrial spur, so the the mainline rail requirements don't apply.
Yeah, I, that's what I was trying to make sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're pretty sure this isn't a mainline project.
It is not.
But.
No, but it is trappled, though, right? It's used to go.
Right. Yeah, so when we've done, we've done some crossing improvements, you replace, we replace some crossings, and they did require a flagger during construction. But they didn't require the whole permitting process where you send all your money down the floor, or if you wait six months.
Right. And it's not a, it's not a flagger provided by, you know, the typical main line is you're paying for the flagger that is a BNSF flagger. You know, it's not.
Yeah, no, this could be much higher, whatever.
Yeah.
It's, yeah.
I just thought for safety reasons, it could be down there.
I think it's clarifying that they're not required to have a BNSF flagger that a rail, anytime you're working on an active rail line, you have to. I mean, it's just hard to survey in that world, working in that world.
No, I understood. I just want to make sure.
You can just make your motion subject to my review of the contract. It looks like they've got the scope of services, but I don't know if they have their own contract or term sheet. But I could just review that when they submit that.
All right, any other questions?
I'll make a motion then. I'll make a motion, we have to revise the mayor to sign engineering service contract for 83rd Street Bridge Replacement with Lockner Inc. upon review by city attorney in the amount of 101,802.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Murdock.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Ritter.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, you want, are you texting Kevin?
Just a second.
I can discuss on that last slide. Do you think that the intent is to go with the preferred height?
You know, it's hard to say. Mayor and I were discussing.
All right, welcome back, Kevin.
You know, you like to account for all possibilities of the world at Sunflower, right? But you also wonder, because the only reason you need that is when they're double stacking the intermodal containers. And are they going to have gantry cranes out at Sunflower to be able to unstack and double? Probably not. So.
They have side loaders all over. Yeah, they use them all.
They use the double stack?
Yeah, they take side loaders and stick them through.
Oh, yeah.
On on property. So I'm just asking.
Yeah, I don't know. My first inclination was we need to, you know, account for all possibilities. But, you know, it.
I would keep those.
Yeah. Yeah, well, we'll be discussing it here, because that's a major cost impact.
Yeah.
Major cost and routing and.
Oh, it complicates everything, yeah. Yeah, the the West End tying into.
Road, road access from others. Yeah, that's.
It might be an alignment shift, you know, to the south if that happens.
All right, we will address that when we have a. But again, it will be our decision. It's not, it will be us, wholly us.
Yeah, true.
Unless someone else is going to be writing the check.
Yeah.
The decision of whether or not we're going to raise that bridge rests with this body.
Yeah.
My opinion. Just throwing that out there. Advisory reports. Mike, what do you got?
I don't, I don't have any, anything. Mayor, I have, okay, so questions I have.
All right. Patrick? Oh, I'm sorry, did anybody have questions for Mike? Before we? All right.
And I'm assuming no executive session.
Yeah, no, I already crossed that off.
Nothing for me, there.
Thank you. Brad's not here, so no city planner. So city clerk, Brandon, what's up?
I only have one thing. At your desk is the conflict of interest form that we typically ask council to review on an annual basis. I'll make, Kim, I'll make sure you get one of those. I wasn't aware, I wasn't aware that you were going to be absent, virtual on this meeting. But if you would just fill that out, if there are any changes of employment, we usually do this during the audit season, and then send it off to the Johnson County Elections Office for their files.
Okay.
And then outside of that, I think that's it.
All right, thank you. Council comments. Kevin, on a Michael, you want to start?
Yeah, I'll start and pass.
All right, good enough. Lori?
I have nothing this evening, Mayor, thank you.
All right. Rob? Not tonight. Kevin Ritter.
Thank you.
Danny?
I'm fine, Mayor, thank you.
All right. I have, I think, two items. One is this Saturday is the Kansas City Climate Summit at Johnson County Community College. I don't know if you guys got a invite or an email about that. I'm going to go, I'm going to drive over there in my four wheel drive. But parking lot to the climate summit. I will go there and represent the city, find out what's going on in Kansas City with respect to the climate summit. The other thing I had was Rock Chalk, Jayhawk, go KU! And I'm ready for.
I'll make a motion, adjourn.
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose.